Okay, good evening and welcome. Today is Monday, December 17th, 2018. This is a regular meeting of the Board of Education. If we could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you and welcome. Okay, we have just come from executive session. We did not adjourn executive session. We will be going back to discuss a legal matter with our attorney after our public session here. And we are going to start with comments from the Board. Dash?
Just want to wish everybody a happy holiday, Merry Christmas. And it's been a great year so far and let's keep up the positive energy.
Pete?
May I add nothing further? Well said, Dash. Happy holidays. That's it for me.
Cynthia?
Oh, I just wanted to say last week, if anyone had a chance to go to the concerts, middle school and high school, they were fantastic. And I know it's always standing room only, but I know everyone's happy to be there standing because the kids just did a wonderful job. And I want to thank Mr. Groofy and Mrs. Edie Reedy Fernandez because it was an outstanding show. And happy holidays to everybody.
Good evening, everybody. I'd echo Cynthia's statement. I was able to attend the Strings Concert and it was outstanding. I've never played an instrument and after I go to the Strings Concert, I felt like I should learn how to play strings. So congratulations to the teachers, the students, to the staff for preparing the school. There's so many things going on in the school. If you walk through the hallways, it seems like there's always something and a group of kids somewhere. So kudos to the teachers and to those who have volunteered to work with our students and to the administrators for getting behind the students. And happy holidays to everybody.
Okay, I just wanted to add, I wanted to just remind the public that this year the Board has started office hours. We have the office hours at our regular meetings of the Board of Education. Tonight, Rob and I met in two separate appointments with members of the public. I want to thank those for coming out and sharing their ideas and their concerns with the Board. And just a reminder that if you do want to speak with us, to be in touch with District Clerk Lauren to make an appointment by the Wednesday before the Board meeting, which is always on a Monday night and is on our calendar. So again, just a reminder that that is an option for community members to reach out and have just a one-on-one casual conversation with Board members of anything that might be on your mind. I did also want to wish everyone a very, very Merry Christmas, a Happy Hanukkah, Happy Hol- well, Hanukkah, we've already passed Hanukkah, I'm sorry, and a Happy Holiday Season. It's really always just a joyful time of year and I just want everyone to please cherish the time with their family and their friends and to have a healthy and safe holiday season. Cora?
Thanks, Michelle. So I just want to take a brief moment and recognize some of the work that our students are doing, some outstanding work. So first, at William E. Cottle School, we had our first-ever G.O. elections in fifth grade. I want to thank the Board, last year's budget process. The Board agreed to support this new club for our fifth graders to learn government. We have that at the middle and high school and it certainly belongs at Cottle with the younger students. We elected a treasurer, a secretary, a vice president, a president. The votes were tallied and we now have an office student government at Cottle, complete with classroom reps, as Mr. Moore asked. Also at Cottle, there is this, if you haven't seen it yet, there is this beautiful handprint mural that all the students have contributed to. And this banner is on display and basically what they are doing is pledging their kindness to one another. I applaud the staff that got behind this initiative and the students really embraced it. And I think it speaks to the culture down at Cottle and our work in having students, you know, really, really respect one another and appreciate their peers. Also, there's this amazing group, if you haven't heard about it already, called Tigers Helping Cubs, where our high school students are going down to Cottle regularly, working with the younger students. They love it. This is a real win-win situation. They're helping them with homework, with reading, and even just being there as a support and mentor. That has kicked off and is going really well and I thank our high school students for volunteering for this. Moving over to the middle school, we had a peace poster contest at the middle school and the results were in this week. I'd like to congratulate some of our very talented students. First Ronald Calagaris placed first with the peace poster contest. Jackson Christalis was second place and Kara Bordwell, third place. So congratulations to all those students. We look forward to displaying your beautiful work. And lastly, at the high school, I'd want to compliment our jazz musicians who volunteered their time on December 1st, actually, down at the Winterfest concert. They went and played in the library and community center for our community members. That was an extra performance that they gave and we do appreciate it. I think it was very well received by our community members. And then, of course, I think Cynthia pointed out, the concerts up here for middle and high school are just outstanding at every level. And we have one more next week. The William E. Cottle School is on, I'm sorry, excuse me, this week, on Wednesday at 7:00 PM. And it is up here in the middle high school auditorium. We made that shift last year so more people can enjoy the wonderful performances by our students. So please make every effort to attend. And also, I want to make mention that on December 7th, I want to thank our veterans. They, through Mr. Vito Pinto in our high school guidance office, they organized, you know, this event where they attended U.S. history courses and talked about Pearl Harbor Day. And it was great for our students to hear firsthand from our veterans, you know, what they've gone through. The veterans were from various different wars, but it was in remembrance of Pearl Harbor and I think it was an important lesson for all of our high school students who participated. With that, I just wish everyone a very happy and healthy holiday season. We look forward to seeing you when we return in January. Thank you.
Thank you. Lee?
Sure. This month, we had representatives from the Child Nutrition Program of up in Albany from New York State Education Department came in to review and do an administrative review, which they do every three years for every district. And it was our turn this year. They came in to review our school breakfast and school lunch program. And I'm pleased to report that they found that we were in compliance with meal access, with meal reimbursements, with meal patterns, with nutritional quality, and general program compliance. So we're continuing along with that to meet with our Wellness Committee and continue the discussion on how to improve our school breakfast and lunch program. And then, secondly, Mr. Albano and I and Anthony Russo and the high school custodian and the Cottle custodian did a building walkthroughs this month and we put together a list of things that we'd like to accomplish over school break. So in the December break as well as the February break. And we're looking at doing some more projects in the spring. So we're starting to work on getting that all together. And then finally, we're continuing to work on the budget as we move forward this time of year.
Lee, if I could just add to that, you know, very happy, of course, to hear that the nutrition program is within compliance, of course. But I think we are all in agreement that we can always do better and that the Health and Wellness Committee is going to be meeting shortly and actually even taking visits to other school districts to see what their offerings are and taking a real hard look at the program as it exists and what we could do there to make improvements.
Absolutely.
Okay. PTA, Tara?
Good evening, everyone. Tara Zager is President of the Tuckahoe PTA. I would like to just comment that the PTA activities are winding down a little bit now as we're getting towards the end of the year. We've had a very, very busy few months. And we do want to remind our families at Cottle that our Curious on Hudson program, our winter semester, is going to be starting again after the new year and registration has been open for that and they should be signing up for that. And we also are bringing back our Young at Arts program at Cottle as well this year. We made a few changes to it. Some families may recall that last year it started earlier and it was already in full swing by this point in time. We made a decision to just do the one production of Aristocats Junior, which will happen in June, and the registration for that is now open online. We really do encourage families to start signing up for that. We're hoping to begin those classes right after we get back from the holiday. Thank you.
Thank you, Tara. Tuckahoe School Foundation? Is anyone? No? Okay. Do we have anything left? No? Okay. All right, this is now the first recognition of the audience. If anyone would like to talk about anything that's on the agenda for this evening? Agenda items?
I'm also going to talk on behalf of the PTA about the intermunicipal agreement. I'd like to make a statement on that. I do want to thank Mr. Albano and the Board for finally getting to a point where there is an agreement on this issue with the town of Eastchester for Siwanoy Boulevard and which will allow for the permanent closure of the street. As long as I've served on the Board of the PTA and that street has been open, the PTA has consistently raised concerns about the safety and security of the students at Cottle. And we are very happy that this issue is finally being addressed. We do note that the agreement, as it's written, allows the town to have access to some facilities at the district. And as the Board of Education and the administration is well aware, the Tuckahoe PTA is responsible for the majority of the enrichment programming that occurs within the district, especially at Cottle School. And this is done completely through funds that are raised by the PTA and/or fees that are paid for by the parents for their students to participate in those programs. The programs are administered by volunteers and they don't require any district staff or faculty to run them. So in short, this programming happens at no cost to the district. And certainly, the PTA is very happy to be doing that for the benefit of the children in our community. We are therefore concerned about how the town's right to use the facilities could impact that programming going forward. We do understand that the agreement allows for the town's use of the facilities for only specific recreational activities, but there are certain things that are open to interpretation. And if the PTA cannot be given priority over the town through the agreement itself, we would ask that the town be asked to use the same reservation system that the PTA uses to book facilities, which is currently called School Dude. That would allow the PTA to see what facilities have already been reserved, to respect that through the town, and to try to work around that ourselves. And it would also allow us to put our requests in so that the town can see that what we're doing on a regular basis. We note that the PTA has historically been reserving our facilities well in advance. And when things do come up as a conflict with a space, we work with administrators and others to try to find alternative arrangements and we typically are able to work it out. We would hope that the town would work with us to reach reasonable agreements when a conflict does arise. And we urge the district itself to encourage the town to be that accommodating and making those types of arrangements. We also want the district to understand that when a program has been planned and facilities have been reserved, last-minute changes could result in economic hardship for the PTA and the outright need potentially to cancel a program, which would also be a financial loss. So we would just like it to be clarified that last-minute requests for facilities that have already been booked by the PTA won't be occurring. We don't want to run into those types of situations where we have to cancel things that we have paid for, we get a reputation with vendors that we're not reliable and those sorts of things. Because ultimately, that would be to the detriment of the children in the district. So we thank you for your anticipated support of the PTA going forward on this issue.
Absolutely. Tara, first, the first thing I want to say is that the Board, of course, foremost supports the PTA. I don't see the PTA as being separate from school usage. I don't believe anybody here thinks of the PTA as separate from school usage. So I just want to assure you of that. And if there is some way in a policy or some other way that we can, you know, clarify it so that that's an understanding, I have no problem doing that.
Thank you.
I also want to say that the agreement is specific to the historical usage that the town has had, which to my knowledge has never, ever had a conflict with the PTA. And also that the town also does use School Dude and they do put their usage on our site as well. So they're already, they've already been doing that. And I think it's really important to say that it is nothing in addition to what has already historically been given in the past. I think the only thing that in the last, I would believe, maybe two years, has been some of the Cottle gym time, which was historical use prior to the last past two years. But otherwise, it's all very specific and is laid out in the agreement and it is not anything more than. Although, there is always an opportunity for the town to ask us if we can accommodate. We will if it's not being used by the school, including the PTA. And also, if we were to need something, a different venue from the town, it doesn't stop us from asking for something else from the town. We are not bound to this specific usage on either end. There are many town facilities that we use and our use of town facilities that are not laid out in this agreement. None of that is changing. So I just want to clarify that part, that it has been the historical use and there have been no conflicts with the PTA, of course.
I do appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mike? Go ahead.
Good evening. Excuse me. Mike Denning, 72-7. In reference to the IMA, it seems twofold. One, taking the road. Two, giving the town rights to the school. You know, it'd be better to have two separate IMAs. It seems like in order to get the road, we need to give the town access to the school. I mean, to separate the two, that here's one IMA surrendering the road to the district and here's another IMA in reference to use of the facility.
Well, it's my understanding from the town's point of view, and I don't want to speak on behalf of the town, so you could ask these of the Town Board these same questions. But it is an exchange because the town is giving up a town asset and is looking for something that will give them town usage, you know, throughout the town. Just a little history, the town many years ago gave a piece of Stewart Avenue to the Eastchester School District and in return, the school district gave up a piece of property adjacent to Handel Field so that that recreational usage of Handel Field could then be used for town-wide use. So the town was looking for something that then there would be a town-wide benefit for. So why it's done that way, you may want to ask them more specific questions. For us, this is the agreement after many, many years of trying to come to something. And we feel at this point that we are willing to give the town what they have historically had because we think the safety of our children is our number one priority. So we're in a position at this point...
I think it should be separated, though. It's just, the town is, we, the residents of Eastchester, shrink it again, we, the residents of Tuckahoe School District, are all still residents and we're all still taxpayers. And because one hand has to do something with the other, separate the two issues separately. You know, the town feels they need something in order to give a road that somebody who lives on Garth Road doesn't even know where Siwanoy Boulevard is. So, you know, I don't think that it's...
Well, there might be, there might be children that go to Garth Road that play on a team that uses our...
At Little League on a town field.
That uses our town field.
I understand.
And they pay recre- you know, taxes, you know, for recreation use townwide. So, but again, we have, this is the agreement we have come to and this is what's being offered. And at this point, we, this is what's before us and we have scrutinized this for a very long time. And we're in a position now where we want the street. And if it's, we're not giving anything more than we gave before. And so that's why it's before us, written the way it's written.
Mike, if I may...
Absolutely.
So I hear you loud and clear. Absolutely, absolutely loud and clear. But I think the time that's passed and the ongoing risk to our children, that's kind of how we ended up where we are. We felt that most important to us was to protect our children. You're aware of it. We spend many hours on that field. We see many kids running back and forth with the after-school program and what have you. We felt that in order to get something accomplished, this was the best way to get it done. We think we've done a good job of making sure we didn't give up more than what has been provided before. As Michelle stated, it's historical use. I think also, as Michelle stated, I think it's a fair question. And I think that question probably would be nice. I would love to hear that answer.
I wouldn't go a step further than saying that we actually, as a Board, discussed that same rationale you had before. This is not, what you're saying, we had the same reaction.
So prior to this, there was never an IMA between the village, between the town and the school district in order to use the gym or the facilities?
Correct. That's right. That's right. But your rationale of separating the two, most of us, all of us, had the same thought. And in the back and forth, that was relayed. For reasons that are more complicated than five minutes, it just wasn't going to work for the town that way. So your rationale was put forth back by us and it just wasn't going to work.
It's just government at its best.
But like they said before, I mean, at the end of the day, we felt comfortable with moving forward because we're not giving up any more than we already are. But the concept of separating the two, I agree with you. But it just wasn't going to happen that way, very frankly.
That's a former county police officer. They have a firing range there. If you want to use the range, the town of Eastchester police want to use the range for training, they have to pay to use the range. I'm like, well, it's a county facility paid for by county residents, so the residents of the town of Eastchester already paid. Why pay twice? And that's just government in general. It's just, well, who's going to pay me for use?
Well, I think it's important to say that we're not paying for the street.
No.
So, you know, that question has come up. So I just want to be clear about that. We're not paying for the street.
And what's the use of the street then? Is it going to be permanently closed? Closed during school days, school year?
Well, it's our intent to permanently close the street and that's on the recommendation of our police chief and our security consultant, that any time it's, there's a street that's opened and closed creates confusion. And especially, Rob said about many of our students who play on those fields over the weekend, that if they're used to during the school days, that the field, the street is closed and then they're there on the weekends and the street is open, we think that creates a liability and, you know, risk of injury. So we're not, you know, looking, we're looking to do what's safest. We will have to keep it a street because we have to get emergency access on the street, but it will be a more of a secure, permanent closing. And I, you know, I believe that in January, we will have some type of draft resolution to pass as a, as policy of the Board, that that's the intent, to keep it closed. Because we don't want anyone to say, well, I didn't know I couldn't open it, you know, I didn't know, you know, it's, if it's policy, it's policy to stay closed.
I know when these discussions began years ago, there was in reference to the sewer that's in the street. Is the district now responsible for the street?
We are responsible for the infrastructure underneath the street.
Infrastructure that's in the street.
Just like we are, you know, responsible for the infrastructure underneath our playing fields and yes, we are.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm going to be really quick, I promise. Okay, Allison, you can take as much time as you need.
Allison Halloran, 115 Midlton Place. So with the street being permanently closed, I'm just wondering where the district's process is as far as new traffic patterns, dealing with the amount of cars that normally park on both sides of that street at dismissal time? Where is the district plan for where those cars are supposed to go at dismissal time? The communication of when this is going to start happening? And where is the district's plan as far as caring for the street? I know that, you know, now the street's kind of our responsibility. The district's plan as far as who is actually going to be maintaining the road? Not just, well, it's the school's responsibility versus the town's responsibility, but who within the school? What is our, what, you know, where have we gone other than, okay, now we have the street. What's the next step? Where's the next plan? We've known this has been coming for a long time, just kind of wondering.
Right. Well, when we did the traffic study a couple of years ago, there were several different recommendations. So there was some recommendation, one recommendation that was made if the street was permanent closed. And then there were recommendations made if the street was not permanent closed. So we followed many of the recommendations with the street being open. So now we will go back, take a look at the recommendations that were made with the street being closed and what are our best options. Parking is definitely going to be an issue because my understanding is cars do line up there for pickup and pickup seems to be the tougher time of day. I think in the morning, we're doing a little bit better. We now have a police officer outside on the top of Ridge Street who's helping move traffic along. There is definitely work to be done at pickup. I will say that I did have one resident reach out to, actually, Rob and I, who was concerned about the congestion at pickup. A resident of Ridge Street who could not be here tonight, so I'd like to speak on his behalf. That was his concern. So definitely, we will need to do more work there. That's, that's for sure. Yes, tonight, we're voting on the IMA, but we don't expect to have the deed transferred probably till sometime, maybe in February. In February. So nothing's going to happen overnight here. This is just the first step of going forward with the IMA, but we do still have work to do. And most importantly, communicating what it is that we will be doing.
Right. I just asked, go ahead.
No, because you asked a number of very good questions. The other piece of this is that the town has agreed to repave the street and reset all of the curbstones for us. We, at first, they were going to do that before they turned over ownership, but we deliberately asked them to delay that. So now in the agreement, we have through October 2020, I'm sorry, 2019, excuse me, for them to accomplish this because right now, we have, we're planning a lot of construction. Russ Davidson is here to talk about that a bit. But we're thinking it makes sense to pave it after construction is completed, the heaviest which will be over the course of the summer. The other thing the town has agreed to, which we negotiated, was snow removal. We are a small district. We don't have a lot of heavy equipment. So in the agreement is whenever they plow town streets, as long as we were able to open the streets, so whatever apparatus we use to close it permanently, we have to be able to open it for emergency access vehicles, I think Michelle mentioned that, but also for snow plowing. And that is a huge benefit to us, again, because we're not really equipped for that. So then as far as underneath the street, normal wear and tear, we are responsible for. But if there is some unusual occurrence, then of course, this is under our insurance. So Lee Liu has looked into that aspect. Lee, do you want to add anything to the insurance piece?
No, that's typically what it is. Normal wear and tear would be the responsibility of the district. If there was some other issue that was a covered loss, then we would use our insurance policies to cover it.
Okay. So if we could just, I mean, if we think it's going to be February when the title's transferred, if we could have a plan already in place and communicated, a really solid, like this is the point person, this is how we're going to do it, planned? I think that that's really essential. Thank you.
Agreed.
Thank you for doing this, by the way.
Thank you.
I have asked for this for a long time. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? No? Okay. Okay, we now are going to have a presentation from Russ on our capital improvement project and update as to where we're at.
No, this is more verbal. Am I correct? Russ?
This is it.
No visuals.
Just me.
It's all Russ.
I have one picture that I'll hold up.
Okay.
Happy holidays. Your capital project's moving along well. You have a building permit to construct the addition to Cottle. So that approval is 100% done. I think you've got the permit in the mail. So that's about four months earlier than we had first expected. So that's all good news. Today, your construction manager, Calji, and our office met and we're looking at advertising the project for bid on the 27th and issuing drawings for bid on January 7th. So this will literally be one of the first construction projects for summer construction bid in the first week in January. So that should bring bids back in early February. We'll vet contractors first week of February. We're hoping that on your February 11th Board meeting, you'll be awarding contracts for the Cottle project. Of course, there's a lot of ifs there, if we get enough attention and if we get bids on budget. We did just bid a few projects recently and prices seem to be still competitive, which is good. This is ideal timing to be bidding this project for summer construction. So we're excited and we're... So the Cottle project obviously has the second-story addition, the new vestibule on the street that will no longer be a street. It also includes the Cottle playing field, which is a multipurpose grass field. So that's all going out. We are adding a little bit of scope to the work project as alternates, which is some additional vinyl tile, vinyl asbestos tile removal, some Carter ceiling work, some exhaust fans. So you're going to have a base bid and three or four alternates to look at to see where we, where we stand versus budget. The middle school, high school project features, you know, your new security vestibule. So this is a floor plan of the front of the building. This is the teacher's room, which is going to be demoed and a new security office will be part of that teacher's room. This is your front lobby. Right now, there's, your security desk is right here. So that person will go into this office. And this will all be enclosed in glass. So that's going to be, if you can see it, it's going to be seamless glass with very thin aluminum frames. It's going to be held down so the historic capitals and the tile work are not disturbed. So it's going to look like sort of a contemporary shower door type of invisible glass to create this secure vestibule. to create this secure vestibule where people will be vetted before they can get into the building. And that'll all be done with the school guard laminated glass. So it's a, it'll be a nice feature. I don't think it'll detract from the historic look of the front lobby. And it actually gets the desk out of the lobby, so in that sense, you'll be able to see more of the historic fabric.
Russ, may I ask you, just as a courtesy to the audience, to show them the drawings?
Yep. So this is the floor plan. This is the entrance. The security desk is right there. Right now, this is a teacher's room. So we're going to change this corner into a security office with access from the hall. The teacher's room can be accessed through this other door here. And then the sort of seamless glass wall is here. So it's, it's going to stop short of the ceiling, so air will come over the top, and it doesn't go up against the plaster ceiling and the nice plaster capitals of the columns. And it, it creates a completely enclosed area, so they'll be buzzed in the front door. They'll come here, they'll have to talk to someone at the security desk, which has, we're actually going to take that display case that, that is surrounded in tile, and we're going to cut a window in it. So we're leaving the historic tile surround. It's just going to have a sliding window in it, which will have the school guard security glass as well. So your security personnel will be safer, and people will be safer. Because right now, once you're buzzed in, you're just, you're kind of in. And the security desk is sort of in an exit way, frankly, not ideal. So it's a little bit of an innovative approach, but I think it'll be much better from a security point of view. You also are having, of course, a big part of the middle school, high school projects to replace the synthetic turf field and some other door replacements. And that's ready to go to Albany if you have signed forms for me.
We do.
Going to Albany tomorrow, now that we have signed forms. And we are going to request your third-party review again. So hopefully, in six or eight weeks' time, we can have that approved as well and get that out to bid so that this field can get done this summer as well. So all going well, actually a little ahead of schedule. And I hope that we do as well with all the budget.
I have a, I have a question. It's a general question, maybe Carl or Lee or Russ. So we had a, a couple of weeks ago, we had a workshop, and we, we received an energy efficiency program or a presentation on some of the additional enhancements that could be performed that would make the school, I guess, more efficient, I guess. So my concern on that, not a concern really, is we still have to have more discussion as a board in regards to that. It seems to me like some of those things would make sense to be done as this project was kind of moving along come the summer. And I was just curious, have you been part of those discussions? Are you aware of those discussions? And if, if we, is that something we have to move along quicker to make a decision on? Because if you're going to go out to bid in a few weeks, I would imagine that would need to be part of it.
Well, yeah, we are helping you with the EPC. My partner Walter's helping with that. So we're going to help you integrate that and get the right stuff done. But yes, they're two.
But they're separate.
They are separate.
But together.
Energy performance contracting is a funding method more than anything. But our office is involved, so we're making sure that that dovetails with everything else we're doing for you out of the bond funding.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Anything else? No. Okay, thank you so much, Russ.
Thank you.
That's all good news. Thank you.
Have a great holiday.
Same to you.
You too.
We have lots of ideas.
Oh, good.
Yes.
Okay, all right. We are now going to move on with the agenda. Motion to approve the consent agenda, items two to nine. Pete, second, Dodge, discussion. Anything there? Anyone want to discuss? The tax cert?
Yeah, this is just a final approval. This is the second placement. We received the consent judgment from the court to pay out the tax cert, she are to Sunrise Riverview. It's no change in the payout. It's about, I don't have that.
Two hundred and sixty-four thousand, seven hundred and eighty-six.
Right, which we plan to pay out of reserves.
Out of reserve?
Yes.
Great. Okay.
We, we talk about this often, so I'll just repeat it again.
Go ahead.
This is something that I'm pretty sensitive to. So everyone's aware where the budget is, kind of the process is coming along. We have a reserve, and that reserve is exactly for this reason. So this particular payment's $265,000, which years passed, they used to, we used to borrow money to pay for tax certs. But over the years, we've been diligent. The board, prior board, the current board, has been diligent, Lee and Carl, to make sure that this reserve stays intact, it's funded, and it's ready to handle these certs as they come in. So I think that's super important. It comes up often during our budget discussions in the next few months. So just to reiterate, this is a pretty significant number. So again, just to make everyone aware of the reason for that reserve and its effectiveness.
Thank you, Rob. Agreed. All, all in favor of consent agenda? Okay, move on to business of the board. Second readings of policies. This is policy number 7335, change in scope of work on capital construction projects. And policy number 0110 on sexual harassment. The first policy, 7335, did anyone have any comments about that?
I had just made some, I had worked with Stephanie Burns after the last reading to clarify a couple of portions of that policy so that it would make clear that the superintendent or his or her designee would be able to approve certain change orders of the capital project under $35,000 so as to not delay the construction project. But I did want to make clear that the intent of the policy is that the superintendent or the superintendent's designee would approve it and move forward with it, and then the board would be informed of any of those at their next board meeting in public and would also authorize the board president to sign those. But we would move forward and start the construction work with them.
You know, my question was, and I, I didn't get a chance to look it up myself, but we, on our current policy for purchasing, is it, is it also $35,000? Is that the number we use that we don't need for services, for board approval? Is it under $35,000?
You need, well, what we have in our policy is what is education law, so that anything over $35,000 has to go out to bid. Anything under that, we have a policy that we have three quotes, and then anything over $10,000, we present to the board.
So it, so $10,000, under $10,000, $10,000 is, that basically decisions are made under $10,000 without the board and over $10,000 with board approval?
Right.
And the $35,000 is the number for it to go out to bid?
Correct.
Okay. All right. So I was just wondering if we should be more in line with that, or if we are comfortable with the $35,000? It was just a thought.
Well, the idea is, and it was Stephanie's recommendation, Stephanie Burns's recommendation, that the $35,000, we would have to go out to bid, and the board would have to approve it. Under that, we felt that that was in line with what change orders might come into play, that we didn't want to hold up the project. But it's up to the board as to how you set that threshold.
Okay. All right. Well, we're going to have, we have a little more time to think about it, right? Yeah, I just want to give that a little bit more thought. I don't know if any other board members had anything else they want to add to that?
No, I know that it also stays, it has to be within scope of the project anyways.
Has to be within scope, and it cannot change the budget of the project.
Right, so it's pretty specific.
Right.
Okay. All right. Well, we're going to leave that open until our next meeting. We will vote on the changes, on, on that change. The next one, policy number 0110, sexual harassment. That's a state mandated. Changes. Any questions there? Okay. All right. We'll move on, and those will be on our agenda next month. And we will bring them up again for discussion. If anyone wants to take a look, those policies are on our website for review. Number two, approve an intermunicipal agreement. Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District approves and ratifies the intermunicipal agreement with the town of Eastchester dated December 18th, 2018, through which the town of Eastchester will transfer ownership of the portion of Cywinoy Boulevard between Ridge Street and Crawford Street to the school district. And the school district will allow the town of Eastchester to use certain school district facilities if such facilities are not needed for school district programs, activities, or events, or are not unavailable, inaccessible due to a, renovation or maintenance activities of the school district, b, adoption of a contingency budget for the school district, or c, inclement weather conditions. And be it further resolved that the president of the Board of Education is hereby authorized and empowered to execute the intermunicipal agreement with the town of Eastchester dated December 18th, 2018, as well as the deed to be prepared pursuant to it and transfer ownership of the portion of Cywinoy Boulevard between Ridge Street and Crawford Street to the school district. And be it further resolved that the superintendent of schools and school district officers and administrators are authorized and directed to take all actions necessary to affect the purposes of and to cause compliance with the intermunicipal agreement with the town of Eastchester dated December 18th, 2018. Is there a motion? Pete, second. Rob, discussion? Anyone? Okay, I just want to say, and everyone knows because I have been on the board the longest, and this has been something that has been up for discussion now. It's been almost six, over six years. So I'm very happy tonight that this is on the agenda. I am very pleased that we have come to an agreement with the town that puts the safety of our children's at the forefront where it should be. And I'm very happy for, it is, number one, it is a, a safety and security issue. But number two, it's also a quality of student life here at school because the kids can be outside in the cold weather months. More outside activity, which we all know is, is desperately needed. So it really fits so many of our needs, being that we are on such a small, tight campus that we are, which has its all good qualities, but also has many challenges. This is definitely has been one of our challenges. So very pleased to put this forward tonight. All in favor? Number three, grievance decision. Whereas the Board of Education has received a level three grievance from the CSEA dated November 9th, 2018, and whereas the Board of Education has reviewed the positions of the party and deliberated thereon, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District hereby denies the level three grievance dated November 9th, 2018, consistent with its decision dated December 17th, 2018, which is approved herein and directs the district clerk to issue the decision to the superintendent of schools and the CSEA. Is there a motion? Cynthia, second. Pete, discussion? All in favor? Okay, personnel. Accept personnel recommendations. Resolve to accept personnel action items A through G as outlined below. Is there a motion? Dodge, second. Pete, discussion? All in favor? And we now move to the second recognition of the audience. If anyone wants to add anything this evening? Mike?
Sorry, back again.
That's okay.
Mike Danning, 72 Stevens. In reference to the, the sociarty, for what tax years was that?
Lee, do you have that? Because it's not in the resolution, the tax years.
No, I'll have to get that for you. I have it in my office, but I don't have it really here.
And then what, what is the adjusted new value?
Also, I have that in my office. I didn't bring it with me. I apologize.
Okay. And how?
Stop by after the meeting and get it right.
Do you have any idea how that will affect the overall budget with the new value on that?
It doesn't affect the budget. What it does is it redistributes the taxes in the district.
It, it affects the rest of us. Yeah, so that's, that's why I'm, I'm asking.
So our budget is $34 million, so it would adjust it slightly, but I don't have any numbers in front of me.
Okay. But it wouldn't adjust it by the $265,000?
Right.
Lee, I believe I do have access to the years. What I'm reading is 2007 through 2016.
Okay. Thank you very much. And do you have what the assessed value change was? Any change?
Let me make sure I'm giving you the right number.
For each year, yes.
Yeah, for each year. And we definitely should, maybe should send that to you. The new assessed value last year is, is 167,140.
And that's coming down from?
It's a reduction of, of $59,000 from.
$59,000, okay.
From the original assessed value.
Okay.
Okay?
All right, thank you.
It's about just under $60,000.
All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
How's it going, everybody? Moreno Yandello, co-director of the Tuckahoe After School Care Program. Just wanted to like curtail on the PTA having access to the building. And you, considering the PTA as part of the district, we have currently 190 families enrolled in TASK. Close to 200. Where do you leave that? Where do we stand in your eyes, in the district? You know, Friday was kind of a rough day for us. You guys called a last-minute closing of schools, and you put at least 100 students out. We want to know where we stand in this upcoming summer. Summer's moving on from here. School year is, where does the district view the after-school care program?
Okay, I, I just want to say, you know, I really want to commend you because you have an outstanding program. And it's a very big attraction to our district. Many families come here for TASK because we offer such a wonderful program. So I want to thank you. You do an amazing job, and I, and I think that's worth saying. I, I will let you know that it was definitely weighed heavy on us because we were concerned with TASK because of the camps. And with, as, as we read, that if there is construction, and we did have to make a decision this summer, that we would have to close Cottle School to all camps, all summer activity because of the construction that's going to be going on there. So really, I want to commend Carl. He had a meeting. He had, you come up here, TASK. He had the town camp, and wanted to make sure that we can work it all out to accommodate both of the programs. We didn't want to lose either program. So I just think that that's a relationship that we value. I think as long, you, you have to know that we value that. And we will make it, you know, I, I think we can, I think there's room for everybody. I really think we can make it work. And I think the way that this camp worked out over the summer is just proof of that. That when you come together and you work it out, and instead of like, you know, this fear of who's not going to be able to do it, like, we, we, you know, we come together, we work it out, and it works. And I think that that's the kind of relationship that we need to have with everybody.
And I think we've had that relationship.
I would agree.
We've bent over backwards, I think, and have squeezed into tight spaces and have moved out of the cafeteria when necessary, and have moved from the auditorium and have canceled things when necessary to allow the district to do what it's doing. The thing is that this upcoming summer, right, in that contract you have signed, you're saying that Eastchester might have to take a step back in the account of renovations. Well, currently, you're closing down the Cottle School. So if they're second up, where, again, where does that leave TASK? Because with a limited amount of space, we cannot offer the quality program that we're trying to.
Right.
And you're dis servicing Tuckahoe kids at, so I don't, like, where, where are we going with this, essentially?
But I, but we're not, because.
But you are, because they need a certain amount of rooms, right?
And so do you, and everybody fits.
We've had one meeting two months ago.
But I, I think that is the whole point I'm making. Everybody fits. And there, no one is going to be left out, and we made sure of that.
But we don't have a turf field to use. We're going to, what if Eastchester comes at us and says we need the entire gym?
Right, and right now, you don't have a closed street. You don't have a closed street for your kids after school either. And that's what we're offering you. So, you know, I think that's what we all have to work to, to realize, that the, the street not being closed doesn't create a great situation for TASK as your program stands right now. And the kids being able to go outside after school and be in a safer environment after school, as well as during school hours, has to have some value, and that has to come first. And I think that that's, you know, what, what this agreement does. It puts the school, the safety of the, of the students first.
Which is great. I 100% agree with that. My concern again is looking at this summer, right? What does Eastchester come at you and say that they need?
We've, they told us what they needed. We worked it out.
Yeah, I'm reading if I may. So I'm, I'm in a different, I'm in an awkward position here, right?
Right.
On the board with TASK, I've been involved with you guys for a long time. So I'm, I'm trying to, to not get involved. But what I can say is that although you may not be aware of it, it's something, as Michelle stated, the board has, it, it's been extremely difficult to figure out. And what I can tell you is TASK is on the top of everybody's mind. And I think, as Michelle stated, we're going to try and, there'll be a way to figure out to make it work for this year. And then things will be fine.
I think, I think we already do that. We already have.
But there's already been preliminary discussions to figure out how that will work, but I, I think it's premature to say what they might be.
But it's, I mean, at this point, like, parents are looking at summer camp right now. Parents are looking at summer camp, as we are looking at planning summer camp. So therefore, we need some kind of, if we can't have summer camp, awesome, let us know that. But the thing is that we need to make decisions now. And we've had one meeting two months ago, and we haven't been in contact since then.
Yes. So, so we had the one meeting, and we. Yes. So we had the one meeting, and we talked about-
We did.
A tentative plan, but this was not official. So now that it is official-
Right.
And I, now we can pinpoint exactly how much space we can provide task. You may be, you may not have the full extent of the space you've had in the past years.
Right. We totally acknowledge that.
But for example, you asked, you know, what the town gets for Camp Rainbow. It's specifically five classrooms for the camp program, five full classrooms, use of the auditorium, use of the gym, one hour daily. So that's very specific. If Camp Rainbow has it one hour, we certainly will work with task in the remaining time. So it'll be this sharing. No one has fields. So the turf field will be, you know-
As I'm saying, it's a tight squeeze.
Completely replaced, and the Cottle play field is off limits as well. So it's a concession for everybody.
Right.
But like I said, this just became official, and we will have a meeting set up shortly. We will give you in writing, and I do, we did give you floor plans.
Yeah, yeah, I have those.
So we can look at those floor plans and show you specifically what rooms we can offer. But you may not be able to offer the full program, however-
Understand that.
However, the following summer, there will be room for everyone-
Back to normal.
-in a gorgeous new space. So we will be setting up a meeting shortly, if not before the break, immediately after we get back after New Year's.
Again, that's time sensitive. Second portion of that is that, does Eastchester pay rent at all for this space usage?
No.
No. But Tuckahoe's been consistently paying rent for the past seven years we've had camp.
Okay.
Does Cywinoy pay rent?
So the, really, the relationship we have with the town is reciprocal services.
Right.
So the town uses our facilities, and we use town facilities. So we don't have-
But we haven't had the Eastchester street. We haven't had Cywinoy this entire town.
No, I'm talking outside of that. So we don't have a baseball field. We use Parkway Oval. We don't have, we use the Lake Isle golf course. We use the tennis courts. They pick up our garbage. You know, many of the services that they provide for us, and in turn, we open our fields to the town leagues for usage. So that's a reciprocal service that we are, you know, working with the town for. So what are the benefits that we get from the town, and what are the benefits the town get from us? That's reciprocal agreement.
Okay. All right. That's it. Thank you.
I will also say that also your, for task, just so people know, that they also pay to attend task. It's not provided for in our pub, in public school service, right? Okay, just want to make that so people understand that. Okay. Anybody else? No. Okay. So we are going to go back to executive session, and I again want to wish everybody a happy holiday, be safe, and enjoy.